I guess we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our clerk has prior obligations and will be here this evening, but she's running a little late. So in her temporary absence.
I make a motion to appoint myself to clerk temporarily until the clerk arrives.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion to appoint trustee Bills to temporary clerk until our permanent clerk arrives. Motion by Bills, support by Rice. Any discussion? Please?
She can do it. I'm good.
All in favor of the motion to appoint trustee Bills to temporary clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Clerk Bills? Would you please do a roll call of the board?
Treasurer Rice?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
I'm here. Supervisor Milky?
Here.
All here.
And just for the record, trustee Brown had a funeral.
Oh, yeah.
So he's excused?
Yep, trustee Brown is excused. Clerk Cody's late.
Thank you. We have an agenda in front of us. Being that I had just received notice that she was a little late, I'm just looking to see if there might be any reason to rearrange the agenda. And unless there are suggestions from this board, I'm not seeing any, so I'm happy to entertain any motions though regarding the agenda.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Rice. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item five on our agenda, presentations. We have our county commissioner, Angler, here, who represents our township as well as Deerfield. I got that correct, right?
You got that correct, yes, sir.
You have the floor.
I know we got a long agenda, so I'll just real quick update on main thing that happened is board reorganization. Our boards worked real well together, so we did not want to change a lot of things. So Topon Hope was elected as chairman. Jim Horton, which was the vice chairman, which used to represent this district, did not decide to run, so Jerry Jowswinski decided he's our vice chairman. The new person, Chris Emery, that was elected in my old district, we moved him into finance and then we kept pretty much everything else the same. So I'm still chairman of the Criminal Justice County Affairs and Jim Moreno's still chairman of the Human Resources and Public Works. And all the committees, we kept pretty much the same with Emery picking up Horton's old position. So if it's working well and we seem to get along together, we decided not to change anything. So with that, that's all the real changes I got unless you have any questions. I will not take up too much of your time.
Thank you.
Real quick on the Murph, you're going to begin to take that up this year. Do you have any timeline and what's expected with that?
Actually, Thursday, we're going to have another report on there. We are looking at probably doing a steering committee to expand it. So we get more people involved with it. The Murph committee right now is probably not big enough to handle that if we decide to go forward. So we'll be getting into the finances Thursday, hoping to get people to volunteer or to ask to serve on that expanded committee. The chairman already asked me to be part of that or maybe head that up. So once that gets going, so we want to get moving. We're probably going to hire somebody right away to try to get some grant writing, get started on that, find some money, and then we're going to try to get contact. We have contacted the other counties to try to get representative from other counties to sit in that if we're going to be a regional. Of course, we haven't seen the finances, but I got a feeling that's the way we're going to go with it. So hopefully by the next time you see me, we'll have a little more information on the finances. But I think everyone wants to go forward with it if we can, so this is probably the next step. But we do need to expand to a steering committee because the personnel we got, we just not enough people. We want to get more people involved to get this project going, so.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
We have no other presentations tonight, so that brings us to public comment, item seven on our agenda. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. My understanding is we have no one attending virtually, so I'm not going to explain those directions on how to participate. But for those that are here, please state your name and address for the record. And this is for items regarding items on this agenda and limited to three minutes. And with that, at 7:06, we'll open up public comment.
Thank you very much. Ben Gunning, 2270 East Broomfield Road. First of all, I would like to express publicly my sympathies to the FIG family. Dick was a good friend of mine, job creator, very innovative business person, probably the most competitive business person that I've ever known. So tomorrow will be his services and he's going to be sorely missed. So quite a character and a great man, I think. Secondly, we have attorneys here tonight. We have Mr. Zaladis out in the dark tonight, sitting in here where probably you'd rather be at home. Me, I'm regular, so it doesn't matter, right? But this was all avoidable. You know, these guys could have been back at home tonight with their families instead of being here. Because the litigations that are under settlement at this point in time should have never really happened. It should have been something that should have been negotiated out a long time ago, before it went to this. And so I'm quite disappointed. I had one member or trustee member from that board who's still in this room said that negotiating with the other attorneys would be like letting, quote unquote, "the fox into the hen house." That comment stuck with me for two and a half years. And so I think that person's probably more than likely regretting that they said that. Because most of the discussion, there are things that were concerns to the other group, looks like they pretty much were addressed. And the ordinance itself is seven pages lighter than it was at that time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public comment's still open at this point. See, when no one else coming forward, we'll close public comment at 7:09 PM. That takes us to item eight on our agenda, report boards and comments. Just briefly, we went through a flurry of appointments in December. Grateful to see all those that are willing to serve on our boards. It's not always easy to recruit, so thank you to those that are. And that stepped up. But with that, we do have an opening, one opening on the sidewalk committee, correct? One that we need to fill. That is a subcommittee of the planning commission. It's appointed by the planning commission. But I want to remind the public and our members here on this board that we certainly can help to find someone to serve provided the planning commission wants to appoint that person. Also, planning commission, I believe, has three seats coming open at the end of February. We've received at this point, three applications. So just based on how we've done things in the past, I'm going to continue to want to leave that open so that we can allow others the opportunity to apply. So again, think of a planning commission as you're out in the community. And with that, any other comments on this issue from our board?
When will we decide on the next board member?
Well, we have until the 14th. I think what we discussed in December is that we went out for applications until the 16th or is it the 17th now? Seventeenth? So we'll begin at least looking at those until after that, right?
Okay.
So can I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Board member reports? Look over here at trustee Thering.
I wish I had something to talk about. The last time we had met, I had the planning commission in the following week, so really nothing to add to anything at this point.
When is your next planning commission meeting?
It's next week.
Next week?
Do stay.
Would you make a point of reminding the planning commission that we have that sidewalk seat open and?
The what?
The sidewalk seat.
Yes.
Maybe somebody in the planning commission will find somebody in the community. Trustee Bills?
I attended the December 20th, 2022, meeting of the Isabella County Board of Commissioners. And this was largely a huge spate of appointments. So they appointed a whole bunch of people to a whole bunch of committees and boards. And the only other thing were a couple of budget amendments for 2023, which was basically some office machines they needed to include that weren't included. Other than that, there wasn't a heck of a lot done in that meeting. Except that they talked about administrator Controller Frost, but we didn't get to hear that, so. Yeah, I know it's good. They love her. So anyway, that's all I've got.
Well, the article in the paper certainly was glowing from the comments from the commissioners, so.
She's so really cheerful and wonderful. She has great, great charts. And then they had an organizational meeting, as Commissioner Angler already mentioned, which I did not attend because it's there's not a lot going on at that meeting that I would need to report.
I'll just make a comment too. If you haven't had a chance to meet Administrator Frost, she brings very positive energy, and I think that's where your comment cheerful.
That's right.
Definitely comes across.
She is very positive, yes.
Thank you. Treasurer Rice?
I don't have anything. The sidewalk and pathways, we're going to be with the PC the next meeting, so nothing to report there yet. Valentine's Day is coming, which means taxes are due, so payments on those. And that, if you have not come in to pay them or sent your payment in, we also have online available. So you can go to our website and click on the pay, you know, to pay online, view and pay online. And that, or you can call me up and I can walk you through the steps as well. Had several of those, so otherwise there's a drop box right out here as well. Lots of options, so.
Thank you. And like trustee Thering, EDA meets next week, so I have nothing to really report on that. Next week, right? With that, we'll move on to consent agenda, item nine on our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
That was a tie.
Doesn't matter.
Motion by Bills, support by Thering, to approve the consent agenda.
I had warrants.
Thank you. You knew my next question.
I know. There was nothing out of line. Nothing, nothing out of line, so.
I do want to point out, in our consent agenda, the Consumers Energy River Road High Service Pump easement that's there, if I had a chance. Is this board okay if I just ask a question or two about that and then, so we don't have to separate that out?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Oh, I'm fine with that.
If I may, I'm supportive of this, by the way. I'm not coming here to, I was just curious if in the layout.
Is that something we actually have to pull out to ask questions, though?
That's what I was asking this board if you had objection to that. I just want to add one question. You okay?
Yep.
On the easement, it kind of runs along the road line. This is more curiosity. Is there a reason for that versus just running it along the right of way, along US 27? It just seems shorter, is all? Do we know? It's, I was curiosity more than anything.
Yeah, so the power, the three phases coming from the plant, it actually comes from the plant and then comes across. And we went out there and met with consumers in order to avoid some other things, and that's the route that.
Was best?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. I just read through it and I was just more curiosity why it was laid out the way it was. I figured there was reasoning, but yeah. Basically onsite inspection and?
Right. We went out and met with them and talked to them about where they wanted to put it, where we wanted to put it. We wanted it out of the way of some things at the wastewater plant or some things in the future, so.
Right, yeah. And that's what I gathered from the reading is that you'd gone through the process of making sure it wasn't in our way in the future.
Yeah.
So there was never concern on my part based on that. All right, thank you for letting me ask that question. Any other comments on the consent agenda? The motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to pass, the consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to our new business. Let me just note there is potential for closed session. I understand the laws regarding calling closed session. My question, I'm hoping our attorneys or our manager can answer this. If our clerk, who's expected to arrive shortly, shows up while we're in closed session, is she allowed to enter at that time? Okay, thank you. So with that, that brings us to new business, item A. Consideration of tentative agreements between the Aspey Council 25 and Union Township. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this?
The organization and the bargaining groups have spent the last several months negotiating an update to the collective bargaining agreement that expired at the end of 2022. We do have on our agenda an opportunity for the board to go into closed session to receive some additional information on that topic if the board chooses to go into closed session. That's about all I have at this point.
Thank you. So I'm assuming everyone here on our board has read the packet. If anybody's so inclined to want to enter closed session or not, I'm happy to entertain any motions.
I would like to make a motion that the board meet in closed session pursuant to the MCL 15.2681C for strategy related to the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements with the AFSCME Council 25, both supervisory and non-supervisory bargaining units.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Bills. Any further discussion on that? All of, do we need a roll call on this?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So it's back up to you, temporary clerk.
Thank you. Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
I'm a yes. That's all yeses.
Motion to go into closed session passes unanimously. And with that, we'll take a short break to allow our audience to leave and those that should not be here to leave. Thank you again, Commissioner, for being.
Open back into open session at 7:59 PM. So as the public knows, we went into a closed session to discuss tentative agreements regarding township employees. If anyone on this board is inclined to take any action, I'm happy to entertain that.
I move that the township accept and ratify the tentative agreements between the township and AFSCME Council 25 supervisory unit as presented today. I further move that the township supervisor and township clerk are authorized and directed to execute collective bargaining agreements consistent with such tentative agreements.
I'm recusing myself from this vote.
Okay.
I support.
Motion by Rice, support by Thering. Discussion? I just want to say a couple of words. I'm in support of this. I appreciate all the hard work that was put by the staff and our manager and bargaining teams, et cetera, et cetera. And I want to lift up, I've been in this township for a while, and I've seen the culture change. And that culture comes because of the staff that we have, the employees that work here, the management administration that we have here. Grateful to everyone who participate and make this township what it is. Our human capital, our employees, they are our crown jewel of the township. And we often sit at this board and talk about that. The water and sewer is our crown jewel. And as great as those assets are, and how proud we all are of those assets, I'm most proud of our staff.
I agree.
With that, if there's no more further comments, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Ask Me Council 25 agreement.
Roll call.
Would you do roll call of the remaining four board members, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses.
Motion approved is approved unanimously, and for the record, make sure noted that our clerk was recused from that. We had two agreements in front of us. Is anybody inclined to make any kind of action towards the second one?
I move that the township accept and ratify the tentative agreements between the township and AFSCME Council 25 non-supervisory units as presented today. I further move that the township supervisor and township clerk are authorized and directed to execute collective bargaining agreements consistent with such tentative agreements.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Bills. Further discussion? Seeing none from this body, Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the motion to approve the non-supervisory?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes? All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item B on new business. This is potential for closed session again with township council. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have anything to add on this?
I do not.
With that, I'm sure you've all read your packet. If this board is so inclined, I'm happy to entertain any motions. Otherwise, we'll move on.
I move that the board meet in closed session under section 8H of the Open Meetings Act. Consider writ material from the township's attorney that is exempt from disclosure by section 13-1G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Support. Sorry.
You can.
Motion by Thering. I heard support by Bills. Any discussion? Would you do a roll call vote with the motion to go into closed session? Clerk Cody?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice? Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
We are once again going into closed session. With that, we'll take a short, about three-minute recess to empty room and ask...
We'll resume open session at 8:38 PM. So we just had an opportunity to meet with our attorney on an issue. I'll just ask this board if there's anything that they would like to do, otherwise we'll move to new business.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to pay $5,770 in legal fees for Pat Dupree's in regards to the Pung matter.
We have a motion?
Yeah. I'm sorry, just that's it.
Motion? We have a motion.
Caped at $5,770.
Support.
And you said capped at, correct?
Yeah.
Motion by Thering, support by Cody. Discussion?
I'm standing firm with what we decided in the past. That was the end of it. I'm done with it.
Anybody else?
Oh, I just, I wanted to check, you said capped at $5,770, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Capped at $5,770.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're gonna, they're gonna keep coming back, another 10, another 30, another 50. They're gonna come back every time.
$5,770.
I'm inclined for various reasons to agree with trustee Bills on this one, but any other comments? No objection, we'll take a roll call vote on this?
Did it go second?
It did. Yeah, we have a motion to cap $5,770 regarding the Pung matter for payment. We have support by clerk Cody. Everybody's clear on the motion, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call on this, please?
Supervisor Mulkey?
No.
Hold on right now. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills? No. Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Motion passes. That's correct, I had a three to two on that.
Three to two.
Okay, very good. Fantastic. That brings us to new business, item 11C. Again, this is issue regarding legal matters. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have any introduction that you'd like to give on this?
We have an opportunity to close out two cases, both similar, somewhat different. I refer to them as the Zalid matter and the concerned citizens matter. It's been, I think, a couple of months since you've been updated on the various matters. And if you so desire, you can have some discussion in closed session. There's motions that you should have if you do want to go into closed session. And so I'll leave it up to the board to decide how they want to proceed.
Very good. So I think everyone hears where their packet. If someone's so moved, I'll entertain any actions, otherwise we'll move on.
I would like to make...
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session regarding the cases of James and Jeremy Zalid versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Circuit Court case number 20-016281-CK, and Concerned Citizens of Union Township versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Court case number 20-016292-CZ. I move to go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to consult with the township's attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the township, and two, under section 8H of the Open Meetings Act, to consider written material from the township's attorney that is exempt from disclosure by section 13 one G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Cody. Discussion?
I'm standing firm with what we decided in the past. That was the end of it. I'm done with it.
Anybody else?
Oh, I just, I wanted to check, you said capped at $5,770, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Capped at $5,770.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're gonna, they're gonna keep coming back, another 10, another 30, another 50. They're gonna come back every time.
$5,770.
I'm inclined for various reasons to agree with trustee Bills on this one, but any other comments? No objection, we'll take a roll call vote on this?
Did it go second?
It did. Yeah, we have a motion to cap $5,770 regarding the Pung matter for payment. We have support by clerk Cody. Everybody's clear on the motion, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call on this, please?
Supervisor Mulkey?
No.
Hold on right now. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
No.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Motion passes. That's correct, I had a three to two on that.
Three to two.
Okay, very good. Fantastic. That brings us to new business, item 11C. Again, this is issue regarding legal matters. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have any introduction that you'd like to give on this?
We have an opportunity to close out two cases, both similar, somewhat different. I refer to them as the Zalid matter and the concerned citizens matter. It's been, I think, a couple of months since you've been updated on the various matters. And if you so desire, you can have some discussion in closed session. There's motions that you should have if you do want to go into closed session. And so I'll leave it up to the board to decide how they want to proceed.
Very good. So I think everyone hears where their packet. If someone's so moved, I'll entertain any actions, otherwise we'll move on.
I would like to make...
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session regarding the cases of James and Jeremy Zalid versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Circuit Court case number 20-016281-CK, and Concerned Citizens of Union Township versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Court case number 20-016292-CZ. I move to go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to consult with the township's attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the township, and two, under section 8H of the Open Meetings Act, to consider written material from the township's attorney that is exempt from disclosure by section 13 one G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Cody. Any discussion? Roll call vote? Clerk Cody?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. This is getting routine tonight.
We'll resume open session at 8:38 PM. So we just had an opportunity to meet with our attorney on an issue. I'll just ask this board if there's anything that they would like to do, otherwise we'll move to new business.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to pay $5,770 in legal fees for Pat Dupree's in regards to the Pung matter.
We have a motion?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Just, that's it.
Motion? We have a motion?
Caped at $5,770.
Support.
And you said capped at, correct?
Yeah.
Motion by Thering, support by Cody. Discussion?
I'm standing firm with what we decided in the past. That was the end of it. I'm done with it.
Anybody else?
I, oh, I, I just, I wanted to check, you said capped at $5,770, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Capped at $5,770.
I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're gonna, they're gonna keep coming back, another 10, another 30, another 50. They're gonna come back every time.
$5,770.
I'm inclined for various reasons to agree with Trustee Bills on this one, but any, any other comments? No objection, we'll take a roll call vote on this?
Did it go second?
It did. Yeah, we have a, a motion to cap $5,770 regarding the Pung matter for payment. We have support by Clerk Cody. Everybody's clear on the motion, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call on this, please?
Supervisor Mulkey?
No.
Hold on, I'll write down. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills? No. Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Motion passes.
Yippee-ki-she-ki.
That's correct, I had a three to two on that.
Three to two.
Okay, very good. Fantastic. That brings us to new business, item 11C. Again, this is issue regarding legal matters. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have any introduction that you'd like to give on this?
We have an opportunity to close out two cases, both similar, somewhat different. I refer to them as the Zalid matter and the concerned citizens matter. It's been, I think, a couple of months since you've been updated on the various matters. And if you so desire, you can have some discussion in closed session. There's motions that you should have if you do want to go into closed session. So I'll leave it up to the board to decide how they want to proceed.
Very good. So I think everyone hears where their packet. If someone's so moved, I'll entertain any actions, otherwise we'll move on.
I would like to make...
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session regarding the cases of James and Jeremy Zalid versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Circuit Court, case number 20-016281-CK, and Concerned Citizens of Union Township versus Charter Township of Union, now pending in Isabella County Court, case number 20-016292-CZ. Oops. I move to go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to consult with the township's attorney in regarding trial or settlement, settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the lit, litigating or settlement position of the township. And two, under section 8H of the Open Meetings Act, to consider written material from the township's attorney that is exempt from disclosure by section 13, 1G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Cody. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Clerk Cody?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. This is getting routine tonight.
Open session at nine oh six P M. So we just came out of closed session regarding some litigation. The board has an opportunity if they want to take any action on that. I'll just leave that lay on the floor for a minute if anybody has.
I move to adopt the revised extraction ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one as presented with the repeals. And which repeals and replaces the current extraction ordinance number twenty.
We didn't talk about that one yet.
Yeah.
That's a different one.
That's a different one.
But.
That's our next agenda item.
Okay, then I don't make a motion.
I move to authorize the township manager to proceed with finalization of the proposed settlement of the Zalid litigation in the form and manner discussed during closed session, including one execution of the consent judgment. Discuss during closed session and two, the making of any changes to the consent judgment, which are non- subs- substantive and or typographical in nature should the township manager and the township council agree that such changes are necessary and in the best interests of the township.
Support.
A motion by Cody, support by Rice. Discussion.
I think we should do a roll call.
Okay. No discussion? I'll just say I'm glad to be at this place, I hope. And with that, since there's no other debate, Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call vote on the motion?
Supervisor Monkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes?
Motion passes unanimously. So that takes us to item D in our new business. This is regarding some modifications we made to our extract extraction ordinance twenty-three oh one. That extraction ordinance was put into place in twenty, I believe. And with that, we've had two, just for the public purposes, we've had two hearings or public readings, I should call them, on this ordinance. And so this is potentially the final step of either not adopting this or adopting this, if depending the action this board takes. So with that, Mr. Steeldryer, do you have anything you'd like to add on this?
I do not, thank you.
So with that, you're all familiar with it. I'll let you all do what you want to do here.
I make a motion to adopt the revised extraction ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one as presented, which repeals or replaces the current extraction ordinance number twenty dash zero one. Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Cody. Everybody's clear on the motion, right? Uh, any debate? Okay, we've had a lot of discussions about this, right?
Yeah, we did.
Uh, with that, roll call, please.
Supervisor Monkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Zalid.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
I know it's not public comment, but thank you for all your consideration. I'd like to say it was a long, pleasant experience, but I'd be lying. But I appreciate you deciding to go this route. I think it's a good compromise.
Thank you.
We, uh, I won't disappoint you, put it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye, Senator David.
Thanks.
Sorry. Getting a little punky this time of the evening. I'm also hungry with you. With that, so that finishes item D on our agenda. That brings us to item E on our agenda. This was basically board requested discussion to have regarding the clerk's compensation. I don't have an agenda on this at all, other than begin that discussion. I'm assuming, Mr. Steeldryer, you don't have anything to add at this point on this?
That is correct.
With that, I'll just open the floor. This can be fairly informal at this point, I think. I'll add, if it helps. As with every position, I think it's important that compensation's fair. And how we identify that is not always an exact science. But obviously, the clerk's position has changed since twenty eighteen. Some of the proposals that were put into place to protect voting rights or expand voting rights, thrilled that those happened. And then in twenty twenty-two, some additional additional proposal that changes again. What happens in the clerk's office regarding execution of elections. And elections, I consider one of our most sacred duties and obligations as citizens and as local government to execute those. And so because of the changes that are happening, I think it's fair to say that I can speak on the board's behalf that that's why we're here to have this discussion. Is that reasonable?
It is.
Okay. And so with that, I've kind of had my introduction, so I'm supportive of the idea of making sure elections are paid for because that's part of our responsibility from this board.
Well, I requested it last year and I requested it from Kirk Cody this time, didn't get it, don't have a log of how many hours she works. I don't know. I can't, I can't, I don't know how much all the other clerks in the state with townships of eight to nine to ten thousand people get paid or how many hours they work. I don't know any of this information, so I can't really make a judgment on that. But I'd be willing to discuss election bonuses.
Per diems. Not bonus. You can't say bonus. Or not supposed to.
Well, we gave you a bonus two years ago.
Per diem.
We gave you that two years ago. It wasn't, that's not how we discussed it, in my opinion.
Yeah, and it wasn't.
No.
It wasn't real substantial. Yeah, I, I, you know, I struggled with this one a little bit and I've had conversations with our clerk. And I think I can share those here in that I think it's important that that position be compensated fairly. How to quantify that is where I struggle. And I think that's why you asked for logs. What I have seen is, because I watch elections closely, because it's, it's, um, it's inspiring to see them happen. And so I, I watch what goes on in the clerk's office. I see the work that gets put on in the clerk's office. There's no question that the responsibilities have increased because of the proposals and how we do elections now. But I struggle quantifying that. And, you know, I think we had a brief discussion last month. Someone said, well, let's just give a, I think it was seventy-five hundred dollar raise. And today I struggle with that because I don't know what it should be. There's, I just want to throw out one other thing that out there in the idea of per diem. I know one thing that municipalities have done is gone to saying, we're going to pay you a base salary. And then for all work on elections, it's above and beyond, we're going to pay you hourly. I mean, I'm not suggesting that's where I'm at. I just know that that's one solution municipalities have come up with. And in some ways, maybe that's a fair way. I don't know. You know, obviously, I think you're in a position where you probably shouldn't be discussing this much, but I want to be able to ask you questions. Right? And there are, the new Prop two, was it, or Prop three this year?
Two.
Two. It's not real clear. Twenty eighteen, I think, we see the outcome of that. A lot of that has to do with mail-in voting. And each mail vote ballot takes a lot more work than if the in-person voting, correct?
A lot.
A lot. And I've watched that happen. And so that's for the, one of the reasons for the big increase in the responsibilities of the clerk. The other is that the clerk has to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, clerk has to do a lot of this work themselves because of who they are. You can't just have anybody touching ballots. And so at this point, it's you and the deputy, correct? So maybe another way to help the clerk's office is to increase pay for that deputy and or maybe the hours that we limit through our budget process. Because maybe part of helping our clerks is giving them more help outside of themselves. Does that make sense? I'm just throwing ideas out here. So the Prop two, two, we don't know how that's going to play out yet. And my understanding from Clerk Cody is that we have an opportunity now, if we want, to ask some questions about that. You are going to a meeting with Isabelle County Clerks coming up soon?
Yeah, we're going to have a roundtable discussion, so I was going to shoot out an email saying if you had any questions or concerns that we can bring to the state level. We're going to do that. As, you know, we're going to have a speaker for us, talk to them with our questions, concerns, and get more information about it, on what they're planning on doing.
And with that, I think what that means is we really don't know how Prop two is going to come down in actual legislation. How the rubber is going to hit the road and how that's going to affect you yet. Every anticipation is it's going to put more on your office, like, because of the nine days of in-person, is it nine days?
Yeah, it's nine days, eight hours per each day, minimal. I'm going to read over it again to see what other questions I have because it is per page. So I got to read through everything and, you know, come up with questions. But as the nine days to early voting, we have to have a precinct open. I don't know what's limited on how many precincts you have or how many you can combine. So like, we could combine the four and the one, kind of like our absentee, like we already have, but with a central location, they're having it. Some people, the smaller municipalities can have at the county level and have, like, pulled together in one location kind of thing. But that's what we're all trying to figure out so far.
Is there, just curious, is there distance requirements to that as far as combining municipalities?
What, I, on the MTA discussion, the other clerk clerks have said too, that it's done at the county level.
Ours would not be because we're too big. It's like impossible.
I don't know if it's impossible.
I mean, we got two thousand, the city has four thousand, that's, you know, six thou- that's just the absentees. And I don't know about everybody else, so it's like, yeah, six thousand people rushing into one building, that's not counting the all the other.
People are going to vote early.
They do.
They're going to come in to the in-person nine, all, six thousand people.
Aren't they still going to do mail?
Before election day?
I don't know. They already absentee vote early, just so they don't have to deal with the line.
So we get most of ours absentee.
But that's what that means.
But we get most of our votes absentee. No, that's not.
That's what everybody wants to do, is come in and run their ballots.
The A V ballot is, is for forty days before the election.
Yeah, that's mailing.
They can come in. So that's not the in-person. You don't, you don't, don't you have to have the five election inspection inspectors? Or the people that work it?
Yep.
Yeah, so you don't have to have that for forty days.
No, you have to have.
That's for the A V.
That's what I'm trying to explain to you. The early voting, everybody think is A V. I've gotten thousands of phone calls in the last two years. Just every day, people are calling me, can I, where do I put my ballot? Well, you just put it back in the envelope. You know, you got to seal it, sign the back, we'll compare it against the app. I mean, people are going to come in and vote early that way because they want to stick it through the machine. They don't want to be in the big, small minds anymore. So I mean, I don't know if it's going to spread it out so they don't have to. I don't know.
Yeah, we don't.
I can't even guess.
Maybe so we just don't talk forever on this. Let me ask the question of this board. Is their desire to understand, is the compensation to the clerk's office appropriate?
Well, I need some more questions answered.
Me, me too. But let me, just, just the premise of that. Is, is it important to this board that the compensation for that office be appropriate?
It is important. Yes, it is.
Okay. So with that, I'm, I'm like Trustee Bills, where I'm kind of a data person. And, and I'm not necessarily needing the log, although I fully understand why you asked that. I do need to better understand how to quantify this and what that means.
So I had two questions, but they don't necessarily have to be answered today. I can send them to you in an email if that works.
We'd like to hear them too.
Yeah, I'd like to hear the questions.
Okay, so the questions are, and I think we all know the answer to the first one, but it kind of goes into the second one. But has the position of the clerk with time, training, certifications, and working with other staff increased since you were first elected clerk?
The first time?
Since, since you first became the clerk.
Yes, a hundred percent it did.
So it's increased a hundred percent?
I mean, if you want to go four hundred percent, we can go that way.
No, I mean, that, that leads into my second.
Went from here to here.
Okay, so, so when you first became clerk, the wage was what it is today. And now you're saying there is a considerable.
Yeah.
And that was my second question. Like, could you, is it possible to give a percentage of increased in time and, and, and what's required? And what are some of those things? Probably a lot of absentee ballots.
Yeah, I sent you guys a list and what, like, kind of configured some hourly averages.
There were hourly averages in there?
Yeah, it was like description. I did like, you know, hmm.
Yeah, but we, I mean.
You know, it's, you know, like the I D cards, like, you know, how long it takes for that, one to eight hour, you know, all the classes that we have to take. And we have to take them certain times, eat the trainings, the, you know, how long it takes to do this.
Do you, do you know when you?
Audits, FOIAs, I mean.
When you first became clerk, do you know, could you say guess on how many absentee ballots you were running then?
There was three hundred.
What are you doing now?
Two thousand.
And it takes how many minutes per ballot?
Thirty-five. Wait, just to send them. Let's not receive them.
I don't, you know what?
I don't know.
From beginning to end.
Beginning to end, probably fifteen, twenty, fifteen?
So from three hundred to two thousand.
Yeah.
That's, that's not an hour or two. That's, that's a considerable time. In which case, if the pay at three hundred, if that, you know what I'm saying? And I, that's only one of many things that she has to do. And what I'm trying to talk to you, but to the rest of the board is in my mind, I'm trying to, that's how I'm thinking in my mind, I can say, yes, the pay does not reflect the work being done by the clerk position, regardless of who sits in it. One thing that I did have happen, this was my first C O G meeting that I went to. It was in Rosebush and somebody I knew was there. We went up and we had a conversation and they happened to be a clerk. I didn't bring this conversation up, but they talked to me. And they had nothing but good things to say about Lisa. Not only that, but they brought up to me how they didn't feel she was fairly compensated for the amount of work that she had to do because of some of the, just one of the things, three hundred to two thousand, that's not three hundred to six hundred. That's, you know, that's where she, that's where I can understand when she says a hundred or four hundred percent in time. That's, you know, that's where she, that's where I can understand when she says a hundred or four hundred percent in time. So. Talking to the boards.
I have one question. Do you have regular office hours here?
During election time, I have to.
Do you have regular office hours other than election time?
Nope.
Okay, so if she doesn't have regular election, uh, hours except for election time, then, I mean, twenty-two, five. I don't know how that doesn't cover it.
Minus the seven thousand five hundred for my trustee wage that I make, they're doing the same thing on that one. So the clerk position, I literally make fourteen thousand a year doing clerk position. If you think of it that way.
And there, there are a lot of responsibilities that the clerk's office has outside of elections.
Oh, a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
But that she has an assistant that works six to eight hours a week doing those things.
And the required amount of time has increased from what to what?
That's what she can work, because. When I very first started. Like, she got a specific amount, like, or I didn't even have, like, I had to get a, like. I'm required to get a deputy, I have to have one.
Yep.
And if you don't do this stuff consistently, you have to know how to do it, you'll lose it, it's like, it changes so often. But she's coming in one time a week, sometimes she has skipped, like, it depends, it's. We have to total up to a certain amount, which most of it, we have to save for election time because. It's crazy.
Like, why can't she, why can't she only work so many hours?
That's all approved for.
Yeah, and that, that was my comment earlier, is maybe one potential way to help is to boost that position some.
I mean.
And provide our clerk.
In the upcoming elections, I'm gonna need like three staff that just work. Out front or something, I'm using Tara, you know, I mean, luckily, they'll help me. But we're gonna need a greeter person, I mean, there's a lot more people that we're gonna have to make this move.
Not luckily.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
They'll help you, 'cause I tell them to.
And it was impressive on this last election day, I'll just say that when I came in and this hall, the foyer was packed, standing room. And Tara was here helping, and I'm, was it Carrie? Was also helping, and, 'cause there was no way to process these in-person ballot regi- or in-person registration.
Registrations.
Brand-new voters wanting to vote for the first time, and they have to go, how long does it take to process them? Because that's new too.
I think I put that in there.
So I, I guess where I am, I don't, I didn't expect that we're gonna come out of this today with any action. Right? I think we wanted to discuss it, is that reasonable? That's my expectation, is that this is not an election year, we do have a special election in March, correct?
We have two.
Two?
May, August.
May, August?
We don't have any not election years anymore, that doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, this isn't the even-year election, so they are much smaller typically, you still have to mail.
But you, like, so when it's a smaller election, you mail out the notices. And we merge precinct three to precinct. One and have them vote together. And then, so we'll have one and two, Jamison Hall. And we have to mail the three thousand notices out to, oh, two thousand five hundred and whatever.
Once a year?
Twice a year. Every time you merge them together, you have to mail those notices out.
Proposal, wasn't it? That now you only have to do it once a year?
That's an application, you talk about something different. This is when I merged two precincts together for the smaller elections, which saves on the cost for, you know, because.
And you have to hand-write those, or they just get printed off?
I make them.
You make them?
Because it costs about three thousand dollars to get them made.
Have a way to print the address?
Oh, I print the labels from the system, and I make the mailer cards myself, I take cardboard, make them on a template that I created. And then I use the thing to cut them, and if not, it costs way too much. I only get so much for budget, so I try to penny pinch as much as I can.
I think we could certainly authorize it so that she can make a tri-fold flyer, right? And with the name printed on the other side, that should be a lot easier than, labels is ridiculous. I think.
So rather than be here all night, 'cause I think we could be here all night on this.
Yeah.
I mean, I did do a study a long time ago, like. Clerks that have similar, it's charter, similar size, blah, blah, blah. Similar duties on what they make versus what I make.
Yeah, we, I remember the wage study.
Not like that I did, with the similarities, like I called, you know, the same millage is the same size. Charter, blah, 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 like similar to, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And then.
You, you haven't done that, have you done that since twenty eighteen at least?
No, because nobody wanted to look at it, so I didn't do it again.
Okay.
It took hours and hours just to put that together, because they asked me to, and then nobody cared to see it, so I didn't do it.
But twenty eighteen is when a big portion of your job requirements changed.
I mean, if I would've knew, I'm not gonna lie, if I knew, would've knew all the changes, I went and ran again. And people said, why did you? Well, it didn't change yet when I did run.
Right.
I had no idea what I was getting into. And then everything changed, and it's just, I.
I think that's the case for a lot of clerks.
It's huge.
The game changed. So how, how do we best, as a board, since we said we do wanna, we all said that. Fair compensation for that office is desirable, right? How do we get there? And I don't have the answers to that today. So I guess.
I mean, I don't have a resolution written up or anything else, and nobody has any ideas, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I didn't expect action today.
And I don't, I don't want, I don't want this to fall a hu- this shouldn't fall a hundred percent on.
Correct.
Lisa, I mean, she's our only source of information, so where do we as a board?
I mean, you can talk to all the other clerks around.
Right, well, right.
So, so let's give ourselves assignments then to start thinking about how to do that.
Yeah.
Brainstorm, 'cause I, I'm open to any ideas at this point, as far as. Do we hire out a wage, somebody to do wage study for us, do we do wage journal, wage study internally? Do we do, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not saying that the job hasn't changed exponentially, I'm just saying that I don't know how to price it. That's all I'm saying. And so, you know, I think a wage study would be fine, and I think, you know, if we're gonna do that, might as well look at. It doesn't matter anyway, the unions are gonna get whatever they want, apparently. So, I mean, but as far as you, uh, yeah, we could, we could try to get somebody to look at that.
I believe I still have a list. Of people that I call with similarities.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem reaching out to as many clerks as I can.
I don't plan to do that, I'm not going to do that.
That's fine, you don't have to. I said I would.
Yeah, and, and Lisa may have a list, although we wanna look, because you wanna do municipalities that are roughly same size.
Do, do, do you by chance have that of, like a call, or?
I gotta look. I don't know if it's the same people, it's been since.
It doesn't matter, if you, if you give me the municipality, I'll just call the municipality.
Yeah, you may be able to go look at their budget.
Right.
Oh, yeah, you can.
I mean, just, 'cause it's public.
Some of them you can, it wasn't online, I'd call.
Really?
Yeah.
I think once we talk to people and get something down, then, then is how, how to approach it from there.
Yeah, and the, the other weird thing here is because of the changes are relatively recent. We may find that a lot of municipalities are in the same place we are right now, where we're like, trying to evaluate. How much has changed and what that means compensation-wise.
They are, they, they talk about it on the MTA.
So my only point with the wage studies, you may be going to a municipality that's having the same questions right now.
That they haven't even set all the regs yet to.
Yeah, for the new proposal.
Yeah.
Proposals.
We can't, we can't even talk about that one.
Few months?
I mean, I'm more worried about like the small municipalities that have it in a, you know, like a little tiny hall, you got one clerk, I mean. For them to have that open for nine days is just crazy.
Yeah, and there's options, it sounds like, to get around that, but for this year, you're not under Prop two.
We don't have to do that, no, that's state and federal only, and it says it right.
Right, so it's only even, even, even-year elections, so these two elections this year are gonna be run under. Prop eighteen, if you will, changes, not. Prop twenty. Not Prop twenty-two changes. So I guess what I'm saying is that. We need to figure out Prop two before we really quantify all this, and that may take a few months, right? And, and we. We could choose to.
I don't know, I'm just saying that.
As far as having data on what that's gonna be.
Let's start making some phone calls, and then if you have anything, any, anything to add, that'd be great.
Yeah, any data we get at this point is more than we have, right?
It's more than we have.
You have ideas on what else we might, would be helpful?
Well, saying that audits take from one to three hundred and twenty hours is not helpful.
That was kinda funny, but I, that's how long it takes, 'cause that was the one that really did it, and I knocked down like a hundred hours off of that, because it really took that long.
Yeah. I don't know.
And of course, I and the deputy were the only two that could do it.
So.
That was my first really big one.
I was just gonna ask that.
You have to do it to people you trust.
Right.
And it's really hard, I'm, I'm on the line. So I'm not gonna hire some person that's just. I, I have to trust them. Like, you know, if something messes up, I can go to jail for that, like, no, you know, it's really important. I have to be picky, I'm sorry.
I, no, I fully understand.
But you don't understand what I'm saying, if anything gets messed up.
Charge for an election FOIA?
Oh, that, you charge hourly, you charge per piece of paper, you charge.
Yeah, so doesn't that go to your budget?
Wait, I think it did.
She said, she's, she's salary though, so.
But I know, but that can allow her to have her assistant work more hours.
I don't know if it works that way.
Just saying, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
You have something?
No.
Breathing later, by the way. Um, I, I don't want this to be too open-ended where we're not being productive, I want, wanna think about how we. Come to what we all agreed is a goal. The goal is understanding proper compensation for the clerk's office, reasonable statement?
Or is the goal to make sure there's enough resources devoted to hold proper elections?
Yeah.
And, and when I say clerk's office, that, yes.
That's a different way of saying that.
I, I would agree with that, 'cause one of my suggestions was, let's increase the budget for the deputy. That's not directly in the clerk's pockets, it's the clerk's office, right? And that's what I meant by that, so I.
The budget.
Clarification.
Yep. The department budget.
And that's where we may need help from our clerk, understanding what can be done outside of your hands. Right? How, how can alleviate some of the, the load that you have, too?
Okay. Sounds good.
Should we move on?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, one last comment, I, I hope you take from this discussion. You've got general support here, we just need to. We're struggling how to quantify things.
That's correct.
Um, okay, so moving on, extended public comment, item eleven on our agenda. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. And with that, if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. We'll open up extended public comment at nine thirty-eight PM. And just to confirm, we have, I see two participants, but that's not. Okay. Last, last call on extended public comment, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at nine thirty-nine PM. That takes us to item twelve on our agenda, manager's comments, Mr. Stewart, you have the floor.
Thank you, just briefly, I just wanna thank Ms. Smith and Mr. Rod- Rodney Nanny. For their leadership during the last couple of weeks when I was out of the country. And also, uh, the support that was provided to them by the organization, I do appreciate that. And it showed me that we're doing something right, 'cause there was a lot going on in those two weeks. Particularly as we prepared for this meeting tonight, that we, we were able to, to, to pull off. I also wanna thank the board for the work that you all did tonight and leading up tonight. To tonight, the, uh, you know, in addition to the budget, probably collective bargaining agreements. And these legal matters that come up that are a result of ordinances and. You know, creating a regulatory framework are very important to the township. And I think what you've done tonight is, is a very positive. Is very positive action that will assist materially in moving. Allowing the administration to move forward in a manner that maximizes the potential achievement of your ends. You need a good workforce, you need a good regulatory framework. And it takes a lot of work to get there, but those are things that. That allow the opportunity for your ends to be met, so thank you. That's all I have.
I think we had the easy job tonight. We'll start over here, so that, that brings us to final board member comment, Trusty Bills.
It's winter, um, I'm going on vacation, I won't be here at the next meeting, I won't be here at the second meeting in February. Um, I've already asked James, and he said he would cover warrants for me, I appreciate that, sir, thank you. I'm also going to be taking over Trusty House, uh, months for warrants instead of the ones I currently have. And, uh, other than that, I think we need to discuss in the future sometime soon. Uh, be in light of ARPA money, the potential need for a grant writer. To write grants for money that we need for projects. And, uh, we, we recently missed out on some money for the current project we're doing in the park. And I think that, uh, I just talked to Commissioner, uh. Oh, my god.
Angler.
Angler. Commissioner Angler, and he said that they, they hire, I think he said Spicer Group. For grant writing on their parks and rec, and so that's something we might wanna consider. Soon, uh, if, or if something needed, if we can, if we can utilize some state grants that are coming forth. Because they have so much money to spend in the next two years. That's all.
So they, they hire Spicer Group on a like as-need basis then?
Correct.
As kind of consultant?
Yes, sir. Well, yes, and they do write, they do all the work that needs to be done, they don't have enough personnel. Which saves a lot of money for personnel, to hire another position.
Yeah.
'Cause they don't have a full-time grant writer at all.
Treasure Rice?
Nothing.
Trusty Thering?
I am good, sir, thank you.
Clerk Cody?
No comment.
One comment for sure. I voted no on a motion tonight regarding some litigation, something that this board has struggled on mightily over time. And I'm happy to support this board in the decision that was made, despite my nay vote. I was gonna be relieved either way, whatever the decision was, I'm behind it, so anyways, I very much respect the comments that were made. And the views that were expressed on that. And just to comment too, we had a, someone from the public commenting, Mr. Fig. Dick Fig has been a big part of our community for a long time, I would agree, he's. An unusual, and I mean this as a compliment, unusual and eclectic businessman. Uh, he and I had a interesting relationship, and I just wanna give kudos to him and, and, uh. You know, su- support to the family. In fact, uh, two of his related surf on our boards. That being Marty Fig on the EDA and Somerville on.
The commission, uh, the aquatic, no, is it, no, the.
The CRC. CRC, thank you, yeah, so, um, I believe he's the son-in-law.
Yep.
So.
I did go to the visitation tonight. On behalf of the township, I, I won't be at the service tomorrow, but. Saw Marty and. That was nice.
Okay, I'm, I'm hoping to make it tomorrow, so.
Well, I appreciate you going for that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I liked it, it was nice. I liked it, it was nice.
And with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion for adjournment, unless it's done.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Thering, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, we are adjourned.